Piper Burke.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Thank you for coming. Go ahead, it's all yours.
Hi, my name is Piper Burke and I live in Laverne. My family and I are against the proposed building. I think that it is unfair that National Corps and the LA County Board of Supervisors do not inform the community of the five-story building. They are putting the needs of 54 nonresidents before the needs of our community. Please learn to protect the children of Laverne and San Dimas. That is my question. I hope that you can all see the importance of this decision and that we will need to oppose and stop this development. I hope you know that my family and I, as well as our neighborhood and community, will fight this development. We will continue to stand up for our community. I feel like this deal is rotten to the core.
At 6:31 PM on March 3rd, if we could please all... Did I say March?
Yes.
That would be on May 3rd. We'll start at 6:31 PM, this meeting order, if you could all please rise. Please place your right hand over your heart.
That would be on May...
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call this meeting to order, a special meeting of the City of Laverne Council from May 3rd, 2023. And we have, Mr. Domer, can you please conduct a roll call?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so, Councilmember Cash and Vida?
Here.
Councilmember Lau?
Present.
Mayor Poetan, present.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson, do you have a vote? Mayor Heffron?
Present.
Announcements of upcoming community events. We had a lot of community announcements at Monday's meeting, but I do want to add one item, as tomorrow is National Prayer Day. For those interested in its origins, having started in 1952 with the joint resolution of Congress, you can visit at www.nationaldayofprayer.org. Do we have any announcements, public announcements right now? Please, Mr. Barry.
So, I'm here to...
Just don't touch that mic.
I'm here to announce that there's going to be, on Sunday, May 7th, at 2:00 PM, peaceful protest, tasteful, not hateful. And with just a suggestion, bring your signs. Park on San Dimas Canyon or neighboring streets not in the business parking lots, not in front of the area there. Make sure you use a crosswalk, be safe. Seniors and disabled might want to bring a chair. It's going to be in front of the Montessori school with their permission. So I have a little flyer for each of you.
Bring an extra trail mix for all of us? Thank you, Ms. Barry, anyone else want announcements? Lily?
Hi, my name is Lily Breno. I want to make the announcement, it's the same time right now, there's a meeting in school ball, Bonita School Ball. I'm watching the livestream. Actually, there are some parents went right now. So if possible, after this meeting, it's still on. I hope we could go to support, because some parents are very brave to went there to read the palm book in library. It's too hard for me, even though I know about since four years ago. But I know it's not school ball, I will say not therefore, it's because the law forced them to put all those palm book in the library. And the kids is going to learn two-week sex ed class in coming weeks in Long Hill. So it's awful, because I went to school ball meeting a long, long time from last four years. But I don't want any conflict, because the media's there, K-KEL's there too. So I hope something, just like a school ball member, we vote for them and then we support them. There are not much things they could do at this moment. But just like I said, as an elected official, school ball member and the city council, sometimes we don't have to follow the law like 100%. There's some possibility, right? So that's why we're here tonight. Okay, I hope some people will go to support after this meeting, to parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Lily, anyone else? Ms. Kalusek. Long time no see.
Yeah, exactly.
Kathy Kalusek, representing the Laverne Historical Society. So Sherry isn't here. I will announce our field trip that we're taking next Saturday, this coming up Saturday, to the Nethercutt Museum. We're going to take a nice big air-conditioned bus. If you want to go, contact Sherry to get your reservation. We're going to take the bus there, Sherry's at 8:30, she's on Bradford. And we'll get back to town at 4:00. And it'll be a lot of fun. And then, of course, our mayor always says we've got to plug memberships, so we are always taking new memberships.
You're jumping ahead of me here, come on.
Or, you know, renewing your membership for 2023, because it is just one... Though I was going to get to that, but... 20 individual, 25 family, 200 if you want a lifetime membership. I did that, because then I don't have to worry about, you know, renewing my membership dues. So I think that's it for now. So, thank you guys.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on the public announcements? With that, we're going to close announcements, we're going to bring up the deus. We only have one item tonight for consideration. However, we, before we get to it, Mr. City Manager, you needed to conduct an action regarding Councilmember Johnson's participation tonight, since he is participating remotely.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Johnson is participating in tonight's meeting remotely. The passage of the Assembly Bill 2449 allows remote participation under certain conditions. Since this has come up, since the publication of the agenda, we'll need to vote to take immediate action to allow his participation. So accordingly, the council president in the chamber will need to have a, well, it's four-fifths vote, but it's unanimous, to allow his participation. After that, the vote on the actual item will be a vote to appropriately... We'll do voice votes, since he is at a remote location. And then, also, just to confirm, Councilmember Johnson, is the only other person present in the room with you, your wife?
Yes, that's correct.
Remote location? Great, no, we don't need that, so. Perfect, some of the weird things with the law, but that settles that. Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Thank you very much. With that, we will need a motion to allow Councilmember Johnson's remote participation under the guidelines of AB 2449. Do I have a motion?
I still move to allow Mr. Johnson to be remote tonight.
Section.
Second, vote please.
And that carries 4-0.
Okay. Do you want a voice vote?
No. Okay, for that, that's good.
Okay, but for another, we're going to do a voice...
Yeah, for everything else now that he's participating, yes.
Okay, Mr. Domer, will you provide a report on this item? Please, thank you for us, please.
Yes, thank you. Well, on Monday, you directed that there be a special meeting to hear a letter of opposition to the proposed development at 740 East Foothill Boulevard in San Dimas, unincorporated area of San Dimas. As you know, this project has been circulating through the county process, but recently was revealed to the public and to the two cities. The two cities are taking action, some in concert, some, you know, on their own. But the attached letter is with the staff report. And looking at the letter, basically, you know, there's an introduction, there's a paragraph about, quite frankly, all that the city of Laverne has done with regard to homelessness and other matters, just because it is important to state that, because sometimes people will say, oh, you're only opposing this because of that issue. But truly, the crux of the matter is, this is being opposed because of the process that has been followed so far, which has completely lacked public engagement, notification. And of course, there are a lot of issues with the building itself, the height, the density and everything else. So this is the draft letter. And I believe at this time, we should... There's no questions by the council, open up to public comments.
Any questions, council? With that, we'll look on a public comment. I have one public comment right here, from Mr. Galadon.
First of all, thank you for making the time to do this tonight for the community. I think we genuinely appreciate it. The first thing I'll pass to you is what I commented on on Monday regarding legislative action in the state, signed by our governor, that I think has led to a lot of why we're here tonight. Also, I'm passing you a copy of Catherine Barker's letter to the community regarding the housing project. So I had a lot to say, but I'm going to cut it shorter, because I'm going to wait and be patient and see what happens of your continued effort and what happens with our supervisors and everybody else that we hope and expect is actually going to support this community. I passed you a copy of the 2020 Housing Bill, signed by our governor, and with the sponsors listed, as I mentioned in this last Monday's council meeting. I feel it's important for everyone to know the facts on part of why we're here today. Additionally, I passed you a letter of response from Supervisor Catherine Barker's office, which was sent to those who have expressed concern or interest in the 740-Foothill project. I would like the materials passed to you to be put in the public record for all to see. The following excerpt is taken directly from that letter, dated just yesterday, from Catherine Barker's office, May 2nd, 2023. Quote, "The county of Los Angeles and the cities of San Dimas and Laverne have no authority to stop this affordable housing project from being built." End quote. So I ask, is this true? Our city is now at the mercy, seemingly, of politicians who encourage and incentivize this gross development, but also developers who playing under these new and favorable rules to them are now preying on our communities and getting money to do it. As they overbuild within and around us, they will forever change the Laverne we know. Quoting Mayor Heffron, your authority seems to have been usurped. We are at the mercy of Sacramento, and there seems to be nothing that we can do about it. I'm very concerned that the unfortunate reality for everyone that has expressed concern regarding the 740-Foothill project is that the letter that you send tonight, while appreciated, is a little bit too late.
Thank you, Mr. Galadon. Anyone else wants to speak on public comment? Ms. Boacham?
Good evening, council and mayor. It was just a little bit too coincidental that today, May 3rd, there was an article in the Inland Valley Daily Bulletin, in the opinion section, written by John Capoll, who was addressing this very issue. It talks about how the gold lines and these metro rail systems have, their ridership is dramatically down. And the state of California will need at least $25 billion for this to continue. Rather than spend the money on building these trains, we need to spend the money on dealing with the population who ride these trains. Incarceration, mental health, drug rehab, temporary housing for people who truly deserve, seniors, veterans, families, people that actually work jobs but cannot afford a place to live. But we need to also, as Mr. Galadon just stated, we need to work with our county supervisors, our state assemblymen and state senators, so that we can find the appropriate location for these projects to be built. The location of 740-Foothill is not that location. They talked about, National Corps discussed the five-mile radius. If you look five miles north of that, it's single-family homes and the Angeles National Forest. How is that resource for the homeless people there? I think the letter that was drafted from the city was excellent. It talked about what we already do, similarly, when we did with the camps, that we already service many of the youth. Rather than be nimbly, say that we already are contributing to helping to find a solution. But I also want to say thank you for having this special meeting, drafting this letter, and really supporting the residents, because that speaks volumes. Because without the council supporting the residents, then we don't have unity, and that's what a community needs. With that said, that I wish that it had been done sooner. I know Mr. Domer and Mr. Constantine, the city manager of San Dimas, were working collectively, trying to work with Barker's office, and trying to come up with a solution to avoid having this done. But once they saw that it was going to go through, that decision to have put it on the agenda should have been made at that time, knowing that there was a meeting for, already scheduled for May 1st, knowing that there was a lot of angry residents, people had questions, people are afraid. I mean, there were people, there was a woman who was in tears on Sunday afternoon, in fear of what is going to come to her neighborhood, in fear of the safety of her children. So this is a very serious issue. I thank you again for making the time to attend this special meeting and send this letter.
Thank you, Ms. Boacham. Anyone else like to speak on this issue inside? Ms. Sullivan?
Mayor, council members. In light of the, in light of the letter that we've all seen today from Ms. Barker's office, I do believe we need to take a different slant on moving forward with this project. There seems to be quite a... I have a different attitude about where we can move forward. I think that there's been a lack of inclusion and a lack of bringing in stakeholders, of which the community is. And for most of these projects, I know that when we were at David &amp; Margaret and we built in conjunction with another company, supportive housing on property there, the community was included. And this is an important process. Stakeholders include the community, and they have not been brought in. And I think this is something that Ms. Barker's office, the board of supervisors... I know that the, both San Dimas and Laverne council members are behind this. But I do believe we can move forward with NCOR. And if we bring in our community stakeholders and our council members, and those that are going to be impacted by this project, we can move forward and make the project more amenable to the location that it is going to be in, because I think it's mostly a fait accompli, that it will be there in some form or another. And I would really encourage our council, Ms. Barker's office, NCOR, to come together and include community stakeholders in this process and continue with meetings on a regular basis to form this project in a manner that would be suitable to the location and in a way that would be amenable to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Anyone else wants to speak on this? Come on up here.
Me?
Well, Rich Gion, lived in the Fox Glen Homes. Thank you for some of you that are, that have already emailed me for the second volley that I've submitted to our supervisors and people so far. The letter that was submitted by Barker and her staff is just a wall. Another wall of Jericho. And the wall will come down. I'm not going to stop. I'm not going to roll over. And until that first shovel is dug, I'm not going to quit. I will keep going until the very last day. So don't assume that I'm going to give up. And don't assume that the people of Fox Glen and Laverne and San Dimas are just going to roll over and give up. Not now, not ever. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gil. Anyone else wants to speak on this item?
Jeff Doster, that's exactly it. It is, it mentioned that it's too late, or that it's already a fait accompli. Basically, that was the objective of the supervisors. They wanted to have this far enough along that they thought we couldn't stop it. My problem with the gist of what your letter has to say is that your only problem is that you didn't include us to make it bigger, better, nicer, whatever it could be, because we haven't had the stakeholders talk about it. That's not the problem. The problem is, if it was the best contributing city, building in the city, the building doesn't belong there. There's no way we would put a building like that in that spot under any other circumstance. The building doesn't belong there regardless of what's inside of it. Side by side, there is no way the people that they're planning on putting in there belong in that community. That is not the right spot for such a facility, even if the building was appropriate. We need to not have that location chosen for that application, period. And that is the gist of what we should be working with, with your letter to Ms. Barker. On Monday, I suggested there might be another location that you could consider, if that's what you have to offer up as an alternative, if that's what you offer up to make it happen with community involvement. This location is not acceptable, period. And that's the stance that we need to take, as a city, as a community, with everyone united.
Thank you, Mr. Gil. Anyone else? Yes?
In reference to the gentleman who just spoke and the lady that spoke...
City State Chair, your name is Anderson.
My name is Bill Smith. And I'm a resident of Laverne for the last 13 years. I agree with the gentleman, this is not the appropriate location for something of this nature. I don't, I don't assume that anybody could build something of this stature for $7 million. I just don't understand how it's feasible. The impact that it would have on the area is dynamic. You know, it's going to affect the people that live on each side of it in a horrible way. It's, it's a monstrosity for that location. We've got glowing examples within the city of what private funding can do for a situation similar to what they were trying to address, the board of supervisors. If they wanted to do something of that nature, I think they would have reached out to us as stakeholders, to you as our representatives, and gone about it a different way than through the back door, to try to just force this on us. It's inappropriate, and that's put in it mildly. You know, the nature of helping somebody, you know, or individuals that need the help, you know, we've addressed that in our city, from what I can see. I've only been here 13 years. We've got glowing examples of how we've helped individuals. They're not going to help anybody but put in that there. They really won't, because what's going to happen, if it even does get put there, is it's going to be, it's going to be an eyesore for the community, and the community is going to react to it as such. And it's, it's, I don't know, I just can't, you know, speak anymore about, you know, how I feel about this, because I don't want to get emotional. It's not a time to get emotional, but nonetheless, you know, we've got to do something to stop this. You know, there's a... You just can't build something like that. You know, just foregoing all kinds of, you know, ordinances that would, that would be required to build in a situation or in a site like that, you know, environmental concerns to the site, the impact that it would have on the city's, you know, functions and funds. It's, it's just too much. It's the wrong place entirely. It's just the wrong place for something, anything, over two stories, probably. And that would be half of what they consider to be feasible in this program, to build 65 feet. It's ridiculous. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for a public comment on this item?
Hi, I am Paige Rhodey, and I live on Dogwood in Fox Glen. And I'm not a speaker, and like someone else said, I have a hard time talking about this without crying. We moved to Fox Glen 25 years ago. We raised our kids there. We love Laverne, we're really involved with school and sports. Our kids love to come back to Laverne. My daughter, no matter where she's at in the country, even when she's been out of the country, she tries to get back for the 4th of July parade. So that's the kind of community that I love, and that's why I thought I wanted to stay in Laverne forever. When I drive into Fox Glen, no matter how my day is, I think I'm home. I love this neighborhood. All lives open. It's such a great place for the community. I go there several times a week. Everything that's been said about the building, it's all correct. I don't want it in any way, shape or form. I was on, well, I've called... The letter that Catherine Barker sent out is like a slap in the face. I've called her office daily, I've sent emails daily. She sent out a fact sheet last week. On the bottom, same thing, if you have any questions, email, call. I emailed my questions, no answer, called, emailed. They told me to send them to National Corps. I've called and emailed National Corps every day. And these are the people that are going to have open communication. I don't think that anything that we're to do, they're not going to, oh, let's bring the community on board and get your opinion. That's not going to happen. They already made their decision, and this is what they're going to do. And another facility similar to this, just recently opened, April 21st, in Avocado Heights. It's actually in a better location. It is in a more industrial area. There's no immediate residence. It is on a bigger lot, but it just opened April 21st. My husband drove by Sunday morning, I said, he wanted to go check it out, because I've seen all the comments about the community saying that this was imposed on them. And they're not even immediately next to it, like we're going to be. They said that there's cars and motorhomes parked up and down the street, that there's trash, that it's unsafe, that people are smoking drugs out front. And they, even on Hilda Solis's Facebook, are saying, where are you now, Hilda Solis? Why aren't you answering us? So my husband drove, and he didn't see the drug, he was there very early in the morning. But he did see the... But he did see the whole street was lined with motorhomes and cars, up and down and all the side streets. So I don't know how that's gonna, we can't, foothills not even wide enough for pedestrians and bikes to go through there. So we're gonna have that, and where are they gonna put all their motorhomes and cars? Because they only have 19 parking spots. So I guess they're gonna park in Fox Glen, or they're gonna park on baseline behind the, behind the big monstrosity. So, I mean, these are all things that, once this is built and they do the little ribbon cutting and take their pictures, they're gonna be gone, and we're gonna be left to deal with all these problems. So I don't, I don't think it should be here at all. I don't, I don't think any, that lot is not appropriate. It's not safe for anyone. It's not safe for the people that live there. That's all I'd say.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have public comment? It's the duo.
We're exhausted.
So, Hector and Ariana Castaneda, Fox Glen community.
So I just wrote down some notes. Everything, everybody already said. We second that. But a couple of other things to note is, I don't know if I heard anybody say, but the extra resources that are gonna be coming from our police department and our fire department. Somebody mentioned, I don't know if it was on a Facebook post, or maybe I've heard it, but the only way to get up to a five-story building is through the fire engine that we have in Laverne, not San Dimas. So that's gonna be our fire department if something goes wrong. There's only gonna be one, one elevator. And this now, they're proposing it now. They changed it over to make it senior center, or senior building, I'm sorry. Well, one elevator for seniors to go up to a fifth floor is not gonna be enough. And, you know, my mom's 75, and she's still dangerous. So at 55 years old, I think that's still pretty young. I don't really think that.
I'm 66, am I a half king? I like the way you put that.
But yeah, I mean, 55 years old, they're trying to smooth it over, make it seem like it's gonna be safer, just because they're saying it's seniors. Seniors are 55 now. 55 is like the new 30. So I don't really feel like that's gonna make much of a difference. Safety of our children is our top priority, and now, as many people know, there's fentanyl, which is the most deadly drug, and every day, more and more kids are being killed by that drug. And, and it's being used by a lot of people with addiction. So I fear that's gonna be coming closer and closer to our streets. You know, we have the park right behind our house, San Dimas Canyon, and we've already found needles there, and we don't really have a huge homeless population. So to bring this over to us is, you know, gonna really, really affect our kids. That's actually the top priority for me, myself personally, is because we have small kids. We're all invested in this community in one way or another. Either we're homeowners or we've lived here our whole life. For, for myself, it's both. I've lived here my entire life in Fox Glen, and I'm homeowner there, as well as, you know, having two other family properties within Fox Glen. So we have a lot on the line. So we are literally doing everything that we have in our power to fight this. But we need to find other ways to fight it than just, besides, you know, coming in here and speaking, you know, our voice, which is very powerful, yet, but we need another strategy. We need to meet with National Corps in person, or their representative, whoever their, I guess, its acquisitions, or, you know, whoever's in charge of this. Also, Barger, she basically stabbed us all in the back. She's not representing us, and we need to hold her directly accountable, and we need to have a meeting with her in person. And I actually already spoke to somebody in City Planning that said, please don't say my name, but the only way that you guys are gonna be able to get this project to stop is if your representative stops it because it's, it's, you know, it's already ready to be approved. I wrote a long email to the planner that is directly in charge of this project. She wrote me back the same thing that we've all heard from Catherine Barger like five times now, and basically said, you know, sorry, the laws have changed and there's nothing that she can do. That they, they're not willing to stop any approvals because, you know, their objection is within the new laws. So we, we need to find a way to push for a more suitable location than what they're proposing. You know, maybe if we can get some case studies on what's happening in their other facility in Avocado Heights. I think it's only been over maybe a month or less, and it's already, you know, looking pretty bad. Also, and if we can find out if there'll be any legal repercussions for the developer, you know, because they're gonna be using our resources for Laverne, even though this is gonna fall under the city of San Dimas, you know, we all know that's just a little small portion, but it's, it's gonna be in Laverne. So those are just some of the extra notes that I wanted to point out, aside from all the things that we've all already said. And, you know, hopefully, we can take this in a new, stronger direction. Anything you wanna add?
I don't think there's anything I can add more than that. You have an upset mother here, and anything I add is just gonna be kind of a marriage of her argument. It's, you know, we have young children. This is our prime motivation. Like, we've been so active in this cause and trying to stop this building. You know, there's times and nights I feel defeated. I haven't gone, since this has all happened, I haven't gone to bed any earlier than 2:00 AM doing research on National Corps, which is fairly disturbing when you look at their track record and the lawsuits the ownership has been in. You know, we have some evidence that's pretty clear that they wear two hats. You know, they're a nonprofit, then they switch on the construction hat, and they're a for-profit, same ownership. So if you really start looking at what this is all about, and, you know, it's disturbing. And, you know, this is nothing more than a money grab with these companies, you know, right in the backs of our tax dollars. Now, just strongly urge, you know, we have to keep the fight. I know some of us are discouraged, and, you know, it's natural, you know, we're gonna throw emotions, but let's keep it going. I'm gonna do my best and keep this opposition going, keep doing my research. And like I said, in front of all you, I plead that we do everything we can in our power. And I'm seeing it, you know, I'm seeing a change of pace here. And, you know, I thank you guys. Thank you. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you guys very much.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay, great. Sorry, I'm driving, so I tell my camera to see to watch. But I appreciate the opportunity. Stephen Moore, 4760, Guy Austrada. Okay, great. Sorry, I'm driving, so I tell my camera to see to watch. But I appreciate the opportunity. Sorry, I'm getting quite good feedback. I apologize.
Can always pull over.
Okay. Stephen Moore, 4760, Guy Austrada. I apologize, I'm driving, so I don't have my doubts in front of me, but I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I had to live in Laverne long, but I grew up, I guess, on the other side of the border in San Dimas, not far from San Dimas Canyon Park and the Fox Glen community. So I'm really familiar with the area. My parents have lived there for over 25 years. You still live nearby. So I really do have a vested interest in this development. And I share everyone else's disappointment and concern with National Corps that they did not proactively engage with the community, and instead are reactively, you know, and related, they now in response to the enormous public pushback. That being said, I do want to applaud our city staff, city manager and city staff, for their responsiveness on this project and the city council. I was really shocked and impressed how quickly the city website got updated, Mr. Domer responding and constantly forwarding the latest information that came out. So I do, I know everyone's frustrated, but I do just want to give credit where credit is due and applaud the city for how quickly they were able to mobilize and respond to this and get, you know, something going here today. That being said, I also recognize that your hands are a bit tied, that this is unincorporated, privately owned, unincorporated county property, and that the city has no control over this. But I do appreciate the efforts to leverage the relationships that you have with elected officials with the developer, et cetera, to get some concessions, including the concession to make it senior living facility. I agree with most of the folks that have spoken, that I don't think the project as designed is appropriate for the space. Five-story, 65 feet tall, doesn't really fit with those minimal setbacks in that location. And so I don't think this is the right project for the space. So I agree and support, you know, speaking out in opposition to this and to try to gain a little bit more information from National Corps. And I wish that this community engagement had gone far earlier in the process. That being said, I did want to note one thing. We have a homelessness crisis in our state, and Laverne is not immune to that. In the last homeless count, our homeless population, or unhoused population, has quadrupled in two years. And that probably undercounts folks that are living in cars, and it doesn't count at all of those folks that are on the precipice of being homeless, who are one bad break away from joining that group. I also know there's a lot of concerns about the increase in unhoused persons that might come with the goal line. And so I do think that we have an obligation, a moral, an ethical, civic obligation, to help those individuals that are the least fortunate among us. I was happy to see in the draft letter, a, an endorsement of the importance of permanent supportive housing, and what a critical step that can be in combating homelessness. And so while I don't, while I agree with everyone else who's spoken, that this particular plan as currently designed is not appropriate for that particular site, I hope that the vote today is not the last step, or the last action that this council takes in response to this crisis, and that it's the beginning of a dialogue in how we can continue to combat homelessness and to assist those in need. Permanent supportive housing, when done correctly, has proven to be remarkably effective in getting people and keeping people off the streets. And so while I don't agree with this particular project as designed, I do hope that we can continue to work with our city plan to combat homelessness as we move forward. So I just wanted to keep that in mind, and thank you all for your service. Thank you.
Anyone else have public comment? Ms. Perry.
Okay, so along the lines of, of why that spot is not good, in talking about the five-mile radius and the hillside, those, the services that they would need, including medical, food, jobs, whatever, they're not in an area where that's, where they're surrounded by opportunities. They're not near a hub of public transportation. They're kind of, a little bit kind of secluded from some of the services that they would need. And that's one of the reasons that they need a more central location near those services, near mass transit, not just a bus stop that they have to go, you know, hop here and there to get to the mass transit. But then back to National Corps and the inclusion of the stakeholders. Obviously, we don't feel valued at all. They pretty much kind of tried to skirt us completely. But now they're going to offer us a virtual meeting, 60 minutes, which butts right up to the San Dimas Council meeting on May 9th. So even their council members are either gonna have to, I mean, they're gonna have to crunch in, they're gonna have to alter their meeting. They're not giving us a real opportunity to speak. If they're truly willing to take a seat at the table with the residents, it needs to be done in good faith, with their best effort, face to face, with a county representative. Like, when we did the camps, we had the probation department and some of the representatives with the city, and of course, the council, the residents. And there are a number of large spaces that are local. I was thinking today of the Bonita Unified Fine Arts Center. That hosts over 700 people. So I'm wondering if we can ask them firmly that if they want to meet with us, it needs to be face to face, and we will host them. We can invite them. And also, there needs to be some sort of a shift if they're gonna butt right up to a council meeting. That kind of feels like a very clear way to say, you guys really don't matter, and we're gonna get this close to when your people are meeting, and just kind of, that's just not even considerate. So it needs to be in another place for the benefit of the people who would be living there. It needs to be in a better place for the benefit of the people who live in Laverne and San Dimas. And we need to have some face to face with our representatives and with National Corps.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Anyone else who wants to speak? Ms. Anderson.
Anna Anderson, Laverne. So why don't we just tell the supervisors not to give the $7 million? They don't have to give the $7 million. It put them in a predicament with the state and the federal government, but they don't have to give the $7 million. Because I'm glad everybody here is going on the fact that we don't want the building there, the building's not right there, and everything else. Because I'm telling you, the state of California pushes this kind of stuff. And if you ever, I went to a planning, our planning department meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I'm shocked. How much, how much California is taking over our cities? They're taking over our zoning, they're taking over what we can build, what we can't build. It's getting ridiculous. And that's the main, this is the main problem. You guys should go to your planning commissions and start asking questions. Because I had to go because they just changed the laws on the ADUs. Used to be you couldn't, if you guys lived baseline enough, it used to be you couldn't build ADUs up there because it's a fire hazard area. Now they said, too bad. Too bad, we're gonna do it, like it or not. And I said, well, what if we're in a landlocked like we are in North Laverne? Too bad. It's just too bad. That's what California's telling everybody. So I recommend they just don't give the $7 million. They don't have to give the $7 million. But the state and the federal government didn't deal with it because California's gone almost. I'm telling you, it's gone. We don't have, we don't have cities anymore that can determine what we want in our cities. We can't say, we don't want this in our cities. They say, too bad, they're gonna have it in your cities. And it's, that's really suppressive. We're not, we shouldn't even have a state anymore. They should just say, okay, we just took over the whole state. We're gonna tell you how to live. That's what they're doing. And this has been going on for a long time. And now, now you can see it when they're building these kind of things. Five-story building, you don't like it, too bad. Setbacks, too bad, we're not gonna have the setbacks like the city has. They're gonna tell you what the setbacks are on these things. You really should go to your planning commissions and find out what's going on. Because it's from there, it's, it's been a long road to get to where we are now, where our cities can't do what we want to do anymore. 10 years, you're not gonna be recognized, Laverne. All the stack and pack houses going up, all these kind of things coming in our city, you're not gonna recognize your city anymore. And you can fight it, and I'm glad you're fighting just on that thing alone. It doesn't belong in that area, because anything else, they're gonna say, too bad. And as far as the homeless go, the homeless come from other states. They used to have, Google took it off now. They used to tell you how many homeless were coming from other states. You come to California, you get a cell phone, you get an allowance, you get your food, you get a place to do your drugs. That's why they come here. Of course, they're gonna come here. That's why we have so many homeless. I remember coming to meetings, maybe like eight, six, six years ago, and we had a homeless count. It was three in Laverne. Now look what we have in Laverne. They're coming from out of state. That's where they're coming from. It's not because we have a shortage of homes, we have more people coming in. And then California always tells people this, and it's propaganda, we don't have enough housing. Don't believe it. California, for three years now, is losing residents. It's going down. The whole country, birth rate is in the toilet. So why do we need all these homes? Think about it. Why do we need all these homes being built? Why do we need all these homes being built? And I'm telling you, California is, I think we've lost California. Unless, because now, we don't have a city that we can live in anymore. And if we go to the next city, or the next city, they're all the same now. So I would suggest to tell the supervisors, don't give the seven million dollars, they don't have to. That's what I would suggest.
I just wanna say, we count on you, okay? So what we supposed to do? So we vote for you guys. If they don't care, a citizen, say we don't like it. Unless they listen to Fine City Council's side and let us say, we don't want it as a resident. Yes, so we count on you, right? So we vote for you. And Barker, I think, maybe I vote for her, I think so. But who you are, really, who you, I don't know you, right? It doesn't matter. So maybe one voice is not important, but thousands of people, thousands of votes, that's a really voice. Because it's more like the communist country right now. I come from a communist country. I am Asian, I am minority. I grew up in communist country, I make money very early, I live in a building, ten, you know, very beautiful building. And then why I come here, because I love Laverne, small town, very beautiful. My husband said, I grow a rose garden to wait for you, right? Why you care about metropolitan? So I came here and now I grow a hundred roses. You guys know I'm a rose lady. So I totally understand her. She, I'm gonna cry, of course, if there's some building next to me. I will cry every day and then I'll hop here and then complain, try my best to protect my home, right? So just please, please understand, they don't really care that spot. I drove just now, under the bridge, very narrow, only one way. I was thinking, people gonna lay under the street, you know, the bridge, homeless there. I even saw a homeless just now, wanna park him? City hall, parking a homeless, carry so many stuff, next to me, he's homeless. So the problem is crazy. I think as a city or a citizen, we pretty much maybe couldn't, very discouraged. I don't know, maybe we couldn't change. Home, California, it's already affordable housing everywhere, three solid fires everywhere. Looks pretty, but I know it's not right. The fifty unit next to my son's school, every day I drive by. I commend fifty down to twenty-five, but nobody listened to me. Now is the fifty unit already there, in few months, very quick. I feel like we couldn't, our voice is pretty like nothing. But you know, what we supposed to do? So we still fight to the end, right? So I hope Mayor, City Council, Johnson, everybody, we vote for you, right? We count on you. So we just will keep coming, try our best. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Laverne. Anyone else could you speak on this, in the audience? Please, just state your name and your address, please.
My name is Ralph Shalafow, and I live in, on Canyon View in Fox Glen. I'm representing five generations of families that are from...
Tell me. It's not you, it's... Okay.
Turn the mic off for a second and turn it back on, and she cleared at least, hopefully.
There we go.
I represent five generations of families from Laverne and San Dimas. I'm representing three generations of families that live in Fox Glen. My parents purchased their house in Fox Glen in the summer, July nineteen sixty-five. I'm kind of guessing that we're the oldest family in Fox Glen. I have to agree with what everybody says here. Too big, wrong space. Bottom line is, it's a for-profit project, right? I agree. Barker, those people, they probably can't do anything. But maybe city manager, city attorneys can do something. Team up, work with other cities, work with cities across the state of California. Because the only way to stop this is to eliminate the by right. The only way it's going in is by right, right? This project wouldn't be built anywhere if I tried to build it. If I went in and said, I want to build this project, you're not gonna let me build this high. You're not gonna let me have the setbacks. So the only way to defeat this project is to defeat that. So I don't have a whole lot more to say. We all know it's wrong. One thing, a couple of observations. There's a palm tree right in front of that lot. Sixty-five feet, right? When you look at that palm tree, you're gonna go, oh my God, they're gonna build the building there. My next point, my daughter told me, she goes, you know, Laverne and San Dimas has done enough. We have Rocky, we have Page, we have Haynes, Leroy Haynes, we have McKinley, and we have David. Haven't we done enough? Thank you.
Thank you very much. You got someone, Marlene Carney? Yes, please.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes. Okay. I just wanted to make a brief comment. I, I agree with most of what's been said. I don't think this project is, that's not the right location. Primarily, it does not serve, it will not serve the client. There has been some discussion that it would be for senior unhoused. Just like it was said earlier, there's no bus stop, there's no services close by. They're displacing a grocery store that serves the Fox Glen and neighboring communities. So these people, if they want to go to the drugstore and get their medications, or they want to go to the grocery store, there's nothing there. So from that perspective, I don't think it's the right location. What I wanted to, and I think that the county and National Corps did a huge disservice to the community by not engaging them early. And I think that, that that needs to be addressed. It can't keep happening, because it's happened in the past. But one thing I wanted to really talk about was a comment that was made about the homeless. I volunteer at Shepherd's Pantry in Glendora. It's a food pantry that serves Irlandale, La Quince, and Glendora. And I see clients, many of whom are housed, but there are a few that are homeless. I'll tell you who they are, they're us. They're people that are on the cusp of homelessness because their jobs just don't provide them enough revenue to pay for a lot of the rents and mortgages that are out there in California. Many of them are senior citizens, many of them are students. They live in their cars or are couch hoppers, they stay with friends and relatives. So the homeless aren't all coming from other states. They're us. They're people that have just hit some bad times. And suddenly, they find themselves on the cusp of ending up on the streets. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that, because I see it. I have friends and relatives, I have family that would be homeless if they didn't have the support system of us. So I just wanted to clarify that. I would hope that the city might start a homeless and housing task force, because this issue is not going to go away. The homeless population is out there, it is growing. There are many that cannot afford to live in this area. Many of our kids are moving away because they can't live here. They can't afford to pay rent. So we need to have some sort of task force that is put together by the city and the neighboring cities, maybe a coalition, a group to kind of address this coalition. Because it's not going to go away. So that's, thank you for listening, me. That's it.
Anyone else could speak on the side? With that, we're gonna close public camera, bring up the dais. Councilor La.
Again, thank you for coming out. I know it's tonight this week for all of you, so I know that's not easy, especially if you've got other commitments, job, family, kids, all that stuff. So thank you for making the time to come out. I do want to also thank staff and city manager for documenting the comments that were made at Monday night's meeting, as well as via email from citizens and residents, as well as input from every member of this city council, and put it all into this letter. So, you know, the points that have been raised tonight, reiterated and reminded by all of you are things that are put in here. You know, it's correct, there is something else that could be done with that funding. And offering, I think, those alternatives and not succumbing to NIMBYism, I think is the way to make our arguments heard and really drive home why this process has been flawed and why this particular project does not fit where it is proposed to fit. So, you know, again, I know that a letter was already in the works, but I think that it was impacted more by your voices and other things that we may not have thought about that could have been incorporated into this letter. So I just want to say thank you to all of you, and I want to say thank you to the staff and to this council for providing that feedback so that we could provide a comprehensive letter citing as many arguments as possible with respect to this. And I would echo the commentary that, you know, homelessness, that issue is not gonna go away. And I think that we are doing quite a bit to alleviate those issues. But I implore all of us to remember that, as Marlene Carney said, that we are all potentially one step away, but for the grace of God, or the grace of our families, or the grace of our support systems. So I think, you know, there is an opportunity for compassion, but this is also an issue that relates to just the facts of the matter. And I appreciate all of you for being very factual about what is happening, so.
Thank you, Councilor La. Councilor Cash.
I speak freely here. I stand with your concerns. Good evening, everybody, first of all. My name is Cash, and many don't know me. I am a proud Laverne resident. I always have, I always end my statements with Laverne strong, and that's what we are. We're gonna be Laverne strong. I understand the communities that affect, if it affects you there in the Fox Glen, it affects me here as well. I'm a Laverne resident, longtime Laverne resident, since I went to Laverne in Grace Miller, those are the days. I don't like it to my resume and history of Laverne. But I want to tell you, we're gonna continue to fight. I always, I never believed in failure. I don't like saying that word. Either I'm gonna win, or I'm gonna learn. But I do understand this, I don't like options, in this case. Because why should I move five-story, sixty-five-feet-high building structure and a single-family resident move it somewhere else? I don't want to move it down anywhere else, this family is a legal heir too, what about them? I understand homelessness issue, I get that, you know? I don't know what's gonna happen tomorrow, but what's happening right now is that it's affecting you and your families. And I will do whatever I can to continue to fight. Okay, we're gonna fight, fight, win, that's what we're gonna do, okay? And if you have any other great suggestions, let me know. Take on any challenge, I have no problem with that. So please, let's continue to have this great dialogue and communication. There's nothing wrong with us having continued conversations. You see me, email me, let us email everybody. Got hundreds of emails, and I do my best to respond to some. Some fellows forgive me, I didn't get two, right? But I did call, the best I can. So if there's anything else I could do, just let me know. I understand conviction, oh boy, do I do, right? So it's one of the things I love. So let's get together, continue to figure out another strategy. Moving it somewhere else, not an option. Not having it there, not an option. And what about the business owner? What about that, that was members of Altadena Distances, great, all, by the way, if you haven't gone there, try their lemon meringue pie. It is fine, it is fine, their lemon meringue pie is pretty good, right? Especially shot out to you. Right, I love going there. So what about that? And correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't there a, behind Altadena, grew up here as a kid, wasn't there an automotive shop there that was?
Porsche.
A Porsche, yeah, I remember that Porsche dealership. I mean, they up and left, but has anybody done anything?
They were, they were raided and...
Or just little things, huh, Nikki?
Well, you know, I didn't know anything about that. But hey, whatever the spill is just going on there, you're not like to, you're looking to what's going on there, to see if there's any other environmental impact that was left behind there for the community. Who knows, when you kick up dust, things happen, right? So again, I'm not an engineer, I'm not the smartest guy in the world, but let's just figure out something that we can do for our city, maybe get down there or somebody else that has any experiences in that field. So thank you very much, stay Laverne strong, and I'm always gonna be...
Thank you, Councilor Cash. We're gonna put down a crossbow.
On, on Monday, a couple residents was stated that we weren't, talked about that we were, as a council, not doing anything about this. And I just want to set the record straight. What I've done, and I know my other council members have done as well. In the past two weeks, I personally have met with the San Dimas city manager and mayor, Barker's office, Rubio's office, put in calls to Solis's office. Even last night, I met with Barker's office and Rubio's office and spoke to them about this as well. Just because we might not be on social media and cheering and doing that, we are still, we're doing that. I want to make sure that we are all out there. And I know every council member up here has done similar things for every one of those things too. And our city manager has with, and staff has met personally with all those offices as well. I'd like, though, our city to not only reach out to our own district, but I want them to reach out and set meetings up with Han's office, Horvath's office, and Mitchell's office though too. Because I believe it's not just a one vote of Barker, and I don't, honestly, Solis hasn't much contact, done much. I want to reach out to all of the supervising offices. Because we are all part of LA County. Just because I'm in District Two, voted throughout, but I'm District Two, doesn't mean I only care about District Two. I care about all of our. As our supervisors, should not only care about their own district, but all the county. And so that's why we should make sure and have calls there too. I stand with the residents in saying that meetings about this, the community outreaches, should not be over Zoom. They should be in person. People can't be hiding behind screens. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for being here, appreciate it. He was here on Monday, I have no commentary, I swear, sorry, you just said that, brother.
Let that little man be on the screen.
We're not gonna hide behind screens to listen to you. You come up here, twenty-three people spoke on Monday. I haven't counted how many people spoke tonight. But we're not gonna hide behind that and, and our faces, we're not running away. And neither should our representatives and/or the people that want to build in our community, because they're gonna come out here to build. So why can't they come out here and listen to us and see us in person and be able to look to us in the face? Because, you know, how many months were we behind Zoom because we had to during COVID? And the interaction and engagement did not happen as much as we are in person. So I stand for that. And what we do in this community, we do great things in this community for huge populations of need. It's been brought up, the Leroy's Homes was here before most of our homes were ever built. David Margaret Center, and then building the center, extra things in there too. I worked at Ramona for over ten years, and students that came into any of those homes had to be in our schools within two days. And worked with all kids, worked with all, all people that coming in and need and really helping out. And countless group homes that are in Laverne that are even, not even part of that, that we, we work with and every day too. So it's not about not doing your due and not doing for people. It's that five-story building, we're building here right off route, a three-story building. Imagine two more stories going up, driving by that. That, that building does not belong in that area. And that sentiment were stated by Barker's office and Rubio's office to me last night about the size and places there. You know, I have coworkers of mine that I worked with when I was a teacher at Ramona that live on Baseline Road, the road right behind. They own three different homes back there, and their backyard is gonna go like this, looking straight up. Can't happen. I know when parents complained about the solar pieces being put at Ramona because they're right by the neighborhood of the school, the shit took them down right away because of the complaints that were looked in their backyard. These are people, and these are, we're a community that listens to our residents, and we do things about it. We can't have people coming in outside... We can't have people coming in outside and doing stuff into our community and putting things where it doesn't work, it doesn't fit. Believe and stand with, with every resident opposing this. And really, truly thanks to our, our city and city manager and staff for jumping on this. The first morning that got the call, thank you, Mayor, for putting out a bid on the mayor at the time. And then the city manager calling San Dimas city manager and getting on top of it to put notices out of what was going on. And thank goodness it stopped for that county supervisors meeting. Got postponed to the 16th, and now got postponed until they can have community engagement. Well, it should be postponed until we got community engagement in San Dimas, Illinois.
Oh, Mr. Johnson, sorry. I forgot he's had a little screen up there. Sorry, Steve.
Hi, Steve. That's okay, Ken. I appreciate, you know, being able to speak. I think everybody on the dais, everybody in the audience is really on the same page as far as what we want to see happen here. And initially, I mean, with the buy right coming down from the state, it was very discouraging. But I think that going after that $7 million and having it redirected is the right thing to do, the right thing for us to be pushing for. Because it's not the right location for this project. There's no question about that. We know it. It should be obvious for anybody that looks at it that it's not the right fit for this area. I'm just glad the staff has gotten us to where we are right now, to where we can vote on this, this letter that we've, that we've drafted, that Ken has drafted for us. I'm, I'm pleased with where we are right now, but it's not over, that's for sure.
Adam, wait. That was weird, like Steve was... Well, I think you've heard from the council and pretty much, we haven't just been sitting on our thumbs. This, this thing came fast at us. And I think our staff, Mr. Dilmer, and also Chris Constantine, the city manager of San Dimas, and also Emmett Bader, Ryan Vienna, myself, with finding this out on the day of the meeting when they were going to vote on this, were able to stop that, along with our city staff and also with their deputy chief, Barker. She understands that this didn't go well, as Mayor Pro Tem Crosby stated. She pushed it off to the 16th. Now it's for another date. Bottom line, has no business being here at all, period. It affects all of our lives, all of us that lived here 40-plus years, just about 40 years, raised all my kids here. It, it's a tough time right now with the state mandating what we have to do as a city and the rules and regulations and, and everything that has to do with building. And this particular piece of property and this particular building has no business whatsoever being in a city. We will fight it as, as a unity here, as you can see, with our city managers. Also, the meeting needs to be in person. I would say at a neutral site, which would be between San Dimas and Laverne, which would be at the Center for Performing Arts. Do a demand meeting with Core International, with our county supervisors, because we have two supervisors. We have Hilda Solis and we have Catherine Barker. And they're very well aware. Catherine Barker is extremely well aware. This is not our first time where we've had an issue, as many people in this room noted, with Applebaum Page. And I don't know if anyone listened to the news, Applebaum Page was how long ago, Pam? Two years? It was pre-pandemic, two years. And I know that Danita Bochamp has been watching that. Just today, or yesterday, at their meeting, they decided, now mind you, they were looking at Applebaum Page, they're looking at Scott or Scott, they're looking at all these locations where they have same situation as us. It's like, how much more do we have to give in our communities between, as a gentleman stated from San Dimas, between Applebaum Page and the youth, and between David and Margaret, and between McKinley, between Rockney, and between Haynes? How much more do we have to give? But they decided today that they're going to go to Los Pedrinos for the youth and for $24 million that they were even going to do out here, and also to the, what's the other, Cam? Danita.
Berge, Night Art?
Berge and Night Art. So this has been two years. So this is just how this, this is working with. And then also the person that was the deputy chief resigned today. So it's like, we need to take control of our own community. That's what I'm getting at. We need to make sure that we fight this. We need to fight it on equal playground. We need to stand our ground. We don't allow this to happen. It's not right for a community. And as far as homeless situation, there's, there's other places. I think the Ken and, Ken Domer and also Chris Constantine, these two other locations are perfect. We've got a housing for the veterans. And then we have, which is the NOFA 28, the Order of Seven Million of U.S. Vets Housing Corporation Jubilo, it's Jubileo, Jubileo Village Fulfillment. So we're going to fight this, guys. We're going to fight it together. But we need everyone together on this. We need to do it as a front. We are all together on this as a council. Our city manager is all together on this. We need to get out to our county supervisors, every single one of them, as Mayor Pro Tem Crosby said. This letter is going out to them, also to Assemblymember Holden, also to Senator Portatino, and also Susan Rubio. She's going to be taking over soon. You know, our community is wonderful. And you know what? It has no business being here. It will destroy the fabric of what we've all grown and loved, which is the quiet little Laverne. And like I say, we're not NIMBY San Dimas, and we're a very generous community. So with that, we're going to fight it. It's not here, not now, not in our neighborhood. So we will fight it any way we can. With that, any motion?
A motion to have a letter of opposition to proposed development at 740 Foothill Boulevard in San Dimas.
Second.
Will we get the vote by voice?
Yes. Mr. Mayor and county members, council will do a voice vote. So going to go with Councilmember Cash Paguina?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lau?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Crosby?
Yes.
Mayor Eifert?
Absolutely, yes. I want to thank all of you again. I know that it seemed like we weren't doing anything, but au contraire, we were all busy with this. And like I say, I appreciate all your input. This affects all of our lives. And we will be, any information, as you've seen with our previous administration, a lot of information didn't get out sometimes. We are on a track for total transparency right here. And I, with Ken Domer and also our website, we'll update everything we can, Mr. Domer, as soon as we get it. And then we'll also reach out to our county supervisors for an in-person meeting at, I think, the Center for Performing Arts. I think it'll hold...
709.
709, there you go. So anyway. With that...
I researched, but I didn't say...
Yeah. I'm going to open up our public comments and communication. Anyone wish to make a public comment? Obviously, this is not on the matter that we've been discussing. This is something we cannot answer to it, but... Am I going all excited or what? Did I make? With that, I'll open up public comment. Ms. Bochamp.
Go ahead, Cam, go ahead.
I thought you had to go to the bathroom.
No, I just happened to think of something that's been like, bugging me a little bit. Okay? So I drive up and down Wheeler a lot. And the signal that is at Via de Mancha drives us crazy.
Too slow?
North or south. No. It'll be, it'll, it'll be like 10 o'clock at night. Nobody's going the other way. And it'll stop, and then, for some reason, it'll turn green for the southbound, and northbound sits there a little longer, like a lot longer. My husband, on the way to work the other day at 5:30 in the morning, sat there with no cars for five minutes. So if somebody can check that signal, it would make our day.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. You know, the thing called the three-minute rule, and you just kind of like, oh, wait, that's not a rule.
This one, this one's on the ground, man.
It's right there on the record. Ms. Bochamp.
So just as you guys just voted 5-0 to send this letter out to everybody that needs to get it, I would ask that on the next agenda, a formal ID will be put on there that you would all do the same to send it to all of the Benita Unified School Board members and the superintendent to have those explicit sex pornography books removed from all of the schools. Thank you.
Mr. Bassler.
Rich Gill's put together a Facebook page that is kind of a clearinghouse for a lot of people for the stuff regarding 740 Foothill. I'd like to ask the council to post the stuff that you've been doing to that so everybody can see it. And also, I believe there's the Nextdoor app has something pretty similar to keep everyone abreast. It's trying to stay on top of things without having to bug you about every little thing you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Bassler. Chuck Albon.
So I just want to say thank you for coming together on this issue for the community. I, I've been fairly actively participating since 2020. And I think it's the first time that I've actually seen the council really stand with conviction behind a very important issue that I think it only feels NIMBY when it happens to you. And I think that my comment to this council and to the audience is that, just like we watch you and how you react and how you vote on certain issues, I think that a lot of us should be awake in a way that we watch the other representatives that you mentioned tonight and what they vote for and what they support. Because if this council's authority is usurped, if Catherine Barker and the other supervisors' authority is usurped, then we only let that happen as both individuals and as a community. So if we look up and down who it is that it is that represents us and how they vote and how they vote on certain items, including this housing concern that we have here, I think we'd all be better off down the road. So thank you for tonight, and thank you for everything.
Thank you, Mr. Albon. Anyone else have public comments?
Just to collect quickly, I didn't mention this on the last, and I know we've been talking about with this project, with the five-story building, maybe doing some figuring out our position. I did go to regional planning today with the county of Los Angeles. And the gentleman there seemed to somewhat be opposed to the project as well. And, you know, kind of deflated my balloon when he mentioned, you know, this is a tough battle I'm going to come into. And, hey, I understand that. But he did mention, and somebody mentioned it earlier, but one of our, one of our graces on this is finding studies on our sewer system that's currently running along Foothill and the capacity it's able to carry. And then also our traffic and how that building, you know, with that many residents, the traffic survey. Now, I'm not sure how to get that. I know that's handled through Caltrans with the traffic in that particular area because it's on Route 66. But I, I know, I spent a ton of time on this, but if anybody's able to, and I'll do my best to get that as well, to get those sewer studies and see how that would be affected. I'm a no-way engineer that would be qualified to figure that out. But if those resources are available, I know that's a finding chance.
We know somebody.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on public comment? With that, we'll close public comment under the dais. Any comments from council? I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight. And we will update you as soon as we get information. And Hector, those are interesting points. Yes, sir. Mr. Dilmer.
I'll look for the councilmember Johnson if he has anything, and then I'll...
Mr. Johnson, any comments?
I just, I just want to thank you for letting me participate in this.
Who are you?
You know, providing me the link to get in. So I appreciate that.
Welcome, Mr. Johnson. We actually voted on it, too.
Yes. And Mr. Mayor, members, council, on the agenda also, we have a closed session item. We do not need to go into closed session. The matter that we're trying to develop was not developed fully, so we do not need to go into closed session. So you can just adjourn the meeting to the next regular scheduled meeting.
That is wonderful. Well, I can actually say our next regular scheduled meeting, Laverne City Council, scheduled for May 15, 2023, at 6:30 PM. And again, thank you all. The fight begins. Thank you. At 7:55 PM.